Good evening. I call this meeting to, I guess, a call of the meeting. Welcome to the City Council Municipal Authority Agendas. It's July 7th, 7:00 PM. We're in the council chambers at the Centennial Building 12 South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. We will start our evening with our invocation, followed by our flag salute, and our invocation is with Scott Kenny from Trinity Baptist Church. Would you please stand?
Before you pray, I just want to say thank you to the City Council and to our mayor for being courageous and wanting to protect our citizens of Yukon. And it's hard being in leadership sometimes. Some people, sometimes they agree with you, sometimes you don't, but we take the right stand. I think the Lord honors.
Thank you.
Let's pray together. Lord, we come to you now in the wonderful name of Jesus. We thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight as free peoples, free citizens, to discuss the business that's before us. Lord, thank you for the gift of government, which is one of your institutions, just like the church and the family. Lord, we pray for these city councilmen here, and, Lord, that you would just bless them with wisdom tonight, that you would use them to continue to watch and care for this community. Lord, we pray again, especially, Lord, as this surge in COVID cases is around us. Lord, protect us, protect our community, protect the families represented here. Thank you for our healthcare providers and our emergency responders as they come and deal with this issue. And, Lord, may we all be conscious of how we live and loving one another, caring for our brother, just as the good Samaritan did. And so, Lord, tonight, we just dedicate this time to you. We thank you for Jesus who loved us and gave himself for us so we might have life and life more abundantly. So, Lord, we pray all this down in the wonderful name of Jesus, who is our God.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, or the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
Okay, do we have any presentations or proclamations tonight?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Right. Visitors, I have Jody Pendleton. You'll state your name, address, and then you may begin talking.
13460 West Willshire Boulevard.
Can you hear? Okay, can you speak a little closer to it? I'm sorry. You know, you're six feet away from people, so...
Okay. It's Jody Pendleton at 13460 West Willshire Boulevard, Yukon. Okay? I'm just here tonight because I wanted to bring up an issue that I've been dealing with for the last couple of years, and it's due to ordinance 1379, I believe. And this is the ordinance that Yukon passed that restricts drilling commercial water wells within city limits. And I just, our neighbor has drilled a commercial water well without a permit, and I've been dealing with the Oklahoma Water Resource Board on the situation. And there's a protest hearing for that next Wednesday, and when I had talked to the Water Resource Board, they had kind of inquired, you know, what Yukon City Ordinance was, and I had given them the information, and they had asked me what action Yukon was taking. And I had said, "At this time, I'm not aware of any." And then there was discovery requested, and when Mr. Schroeder filed his discovery, it says, you know, I said, "Have you obtained a commercial water well permit as required by the City of Yukon Ordinance 1379?" And he says Yukon will not give one. And so, that's what he's going with at the Water Board, that they won't issue one. And so, Mr. Wilkins had said at the Water Resource Board, "Has it been denied?" And I said, "Well, I believe it hasn't been applied for," because he came in to apply for one, but didn't have any of the information in the ordinance. The ordinance requires an aquifer study and a $5,000 bond, and need to be notified. I was not notified, so I want everyone to be aware of that, that there was no notification, and that none of the components of the ordinance were met for this commercial well. And I'm requesting that the council take action and enforce the city ordinance that's in place to protect my water. I live on a homestead farm. We have limited resources water with the aquifer that we're in. Our wells dry up. In summer, we've had to drill multiple wells. And we can't water heavily our gardens. You can't do things like that. You have to ship water in. If you have a hot tub, my sister-in-law tried to do a hot tub. They had to buy water and have it brought in to even fill it, because the well wouldn't support it, and things like that. And Mr. Schroeder has sold water three times during this protest to oil and gas under emergency temporary 90-day permit. The Water Resource Board had told him, "No more," and then the oil company went in and filed it with a wrong section number and got it approved before they realized what was going on until we called. So, that was kicked back. He's had numerous violations from the OCC for the oil-filled mud spraying onto our property and near our water and things like that, that he's been cited for and had to clean up. So, this is kind of someone that doesn't have a lot of respect for the laws, the rules, and I just am here requesting that you guys look into the matter and actually take action to enforce the city ordinance. That's on the books.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have any other visitors? Okay. We'll move on, then. We'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, 2020. B, payment of material claims in the amount of $199,186.81. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, item number 2A. Consider entering into an engagement letter with HBC, CPAs, and advisors to prepare the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, at an approximate cost of $29,450. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council.
Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, 2020. Payment of material claims in the amount of $385,305.89. C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D, renewal of the agreement between the City of Yukon and Crawford and Associates, PC, for the preparation of annual financial statements and general accounting and advisory assistance through June 30th, 2021. E, renewal of the intergovernment agreement with the City of Oklahoma City for the Regional Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program through June 30th, 2021. F, renewal of the inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with the City of Piedmont, providing after-hours emergency dispatch services for the term of July 1, 2020 through July 30th, 2021, at a rate of $4,489.38 per month. G, renewal of the Agreement for Services with Yukon Sharing Ministry, Inc., for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $325. H, renewal of the Agreement for Services with Sister Cities International for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $450. I, renewal of the Agreement for Services with Chisholm Trail Historic Preservation Society, Inc., for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, with services and materials to be provided by the city during the Chisholm Trail Festival. J, renewal of the Agreement for Services with Project Graduation for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, for the amount of $250 upon proper application. K, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for July 21st, 2027 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept A, B, C, D, E, F, and K, and move the other, move G, H, and I to the regular docket.
Do I have a second?
You did not designate J.
I'm sorry, J to the regular docket as well.
Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, you don't need a second. If any council member wishes an item to be pulled, it'll be pulled.
All right, so now we're voting. We'll make a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, and K. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, and K.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Did we have any discussion?
Yes, we did. You missed it. Sorry.
All right. Then I won't vote. I need some answers.
Okay. We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Okay? Did that get everybody? All right. So, now, we go back, this is what I've been told, we go back to G, and we vote on renewal of agreement for services with Yukon Sharing, Inc., for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $325. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to accept.
A second?
Second.
Now, time for discussion.
I'm just trying to figure out why we dropped it. Go ahead. I'll wait.
Well, no, ask that question.
I didn't know why we had to pull it up.
Okay. Would anyone like to dis-
We're all voting on it again.
Right.
I think there's some concern about the city's ability legally to enter into, or to make donations to groups such as Yukon Sharing and Sister Cities International. Not that anybody's opposed or thinks these aren't good groups. I personally would like to know, I don't know if we can discuss GH, I, and J all at the same time, but the question will be the same for each. Mr. Miller, have you had opportunity to scrutinize these contracts against state law that actually prevents us from making donations but allows us to enter into business contracts with groups?
I have reviewed all of these contracts.
And your opinion is that they hold?
I think the city can enter into contracts for services that are provided to the city and the citizens of this city.
Okay.
I did talk to OML today just to get a clarification, and OML's stance on that is that we cannot. If we employ people that normally would do city work, then we can pay that. I am not against these organizations. I just had been told that OML says that the law prohibits that.
Well, let's make a motion that we move this to the next meeting so we can do a little bit more research.
We've been doing this for years, and I think Gary probably knows, you know, what's legal and what's not, so I don't see a problem with that.
Well, when you read the OML guidelines, which I sent to Jim today, it specifically says you can't. What I would like to see is, I still want these paid, but maybe this money comes out of the Yukon Community Support Foundation instead of city budget taxpayers' money.
I still think we might have to do the research and have our city attorney come back to me and tell me, tell us all, next meeting whether or not we can do it. Right now, it looks like we've got two different answers to that question.
Right. So, do we just table it?
Well, our city councillor has indicated that he's scrutinized it and believes that they are true business agreements as set forth in the law. The difficult thing is that we're the ones that have to take the vote, and we're the ones that are liable for the action. I think-
Was this discussed any at your training?
Yes. Yes, it was.
And what did they say?
It, the overall picture was that you cannot make donations, period. You can't enter into, and the quote is, "True business agreement," which, that's why I asked our city councillor, does he feel like these are true business agreements? And he does. But, like I said, we're the ones that are liable for the decision. And I think Mr. Kachini's made a nice recommendation that we table it until the next meeting.
And not saying that we won't pay for this, we might just pay for it out of the foundation money rather than city budget money. So, what do I do?
I would second Mr. Kachini's motion to table it.
Madam Mayor, let me suggest that we could do some research and come back and give that, and also, feel like this to see about being addressed by the Yukon Community Support Foundation.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we just postpone this indefinitely until we can get some research and see how best to handle this now?
I think that's the best. So, do we have to vote on that?
That would be my recommendation. We need a motion to postpone indefinitely and have passed.
To postpone indefinitely, not table.
Postpone, okay, we have a motion to postpone indefinitely and then come back, and so I need a second.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda? Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any reports or boards, commissioners, and city officials, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, ma'am. We'll give your report back as we get the attorney and everybody look into it, and we'll report back.
Oh, no, I'm saw number two. Do we have any reports of boards, commissioners, and city officials?
Oh, yes. I have a good report tonight.
Good. We need that.
All of us heard that the contract has been approved by ODOT for Frisco Interchange, and a lot of kudos were given to the city for its cooperation with them. The work should start within two months. And as a shocker, we got a preliminary report on our sales tax today, not official, and it was up a little over 4% over the same month a year ago, which nobody can figure out why, but some said it-
That's awesome.
We're happy with it, and use tax was up over 30% for the month, which-
Wow.
That's something that, you know, varies every month. It can be up and downs, but the preliminary report, and so with the interchange and sales tax, it's been a couple of good days.
That is, and thank you for all your work on that. All right, we'll move to item number three. Consider approving the budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 per the memo of understanding between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Fraternal Order of Police, number 173, for the supplemental appropriations for the Yukon Public Limited Tax Fund, the Pest Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, is, can you talk on this, or is this Mr. Crosby on this?
Oh, you're on.
Basically, what the FOP has decided to do is that we'd asked them to present a certain amount of money to the budget for this year, and everybody was taking some cuts. They looked at their area, made a few things, but to make up the difference, they recommended that the remainder come out of the public, the pest, public employee safety tax, and we're asking to make that budget amendment for this year so we could move that money and make it appropriate, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's vote.
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, item number four. Consider entering into an engagement letter with HBC, CPAs, and advisor to prepare the audit for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2020, at an approximate cost of $29,450. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, item number five. Consider entering into an interlocal agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, Canadian County, Oklahoma, for labor to make necessary road repairs to Frisco Drive between Cimarron Road and Frisco Road. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda? Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Item number six. Consider approving Resolution 2020-11, a resolution of the Council of the City of Yukon, approval of June 28th, 2018, weighted voting amendment to agreement creating the 911 Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Item number seven. Consider approving Resolution 2020-12, a resolution declaring the necessity in acquiring a certain permanent easement located in the northwest quarter of Section 17, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma. Authorizing, instructing, and directing the city manager to acquire said permanent easement for public streets, drainage, pipeline relocations, utility and uses incidental thereof, for the City of Yukon project, commonly referred to as the State Highway 4 Improvement Project 0475704, by purchase and settlement of damages with the landowner and authorizing and instructing and directing the municipal councillor to condemn said property for said purposes if said permanent easements cannot be purchased and the damages settled by agreement with the landowner. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which piece of land is this specifically? I mean, we kind of commonly refer to some of these properties by their landowner's name.
Right.
Which land is this?
This is a very, you had passed this previously in regard to Mr. Holman's property for the city to have an easement. It became a little more complicated when DPC and One Oak were trying to then also get an easement from the, of course, One Oak is under there, they can do condemnation, DPC can't. They came to us and asked us to do this because of the configuration of it is that DPC's land is outside that. It's our easement, One Oak, DPC. We need that easement to do that. And talking with their attorney, also with Mr. Miller, instead of having three separate condemnations or coming in, they asked us to do one condemnation. And that's why we're going forward with the one condemnation. It's just a lot easier to be handled by the courts, and it was agreed upon, and they said, "Let's do one and get it all settled and move on." And it's my understanding, once we get there, they would like to meet and try to settle it, and we're supposed to have a meeting sometime next week in regards to this. But we have to have the resolution in order to go forward.
And I just want to make sure I understand a couple of the details correctly. So, we would make an offer or settlement with the landowner in a single move, and then these organizations would then purchase those, their easements from the City of Yukon?
They would come back, and we'd be reimbursed for that particular area that they went at the same-
For their portion.
...the whole, if it's $2 a foot, $4, whatever it might be.
Okay.
How many footages they need, we would get that money reimbursed to the city.
And it would be in the exact same dollar-
Right.
-amount.
Right. We would not lose any money on this project to them.
Okay, sir. Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item number eight. Consider approving change order number one for the City of Yukon Emergency Operations Center in the amount of $2,745.04 to furnish and install a 4-inch gas line as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Moving on to item number nine. Consider approving a revocable permit to Davis Carpet Company for the relocation and installation of a new sign pole and existing sign cabinet, sign cabinet encroachment on a portion of the public way or easement or city-owned property 750 East Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sliding.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
I'm sorry, I do have one question. So, if we approve them moving into the easement, and then at some point we need to work on that easement, would they still be liable for their own property? The way this is written, the agreement is basically a revocable permit, so at any time, we can revoke it to do what we need to for that encroachment. Okay. But it's actually overhanging the easement. It's about 13 foot off the ground at the bottom of the sign, so- Okay. So, it's going to encroach about three to four feet. So, we wouldn't be liable for any- No. -damages at that point? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item number 10. Consider accepting the following warranty deeds and temporary easements from Oklahoma Gas and Electric for Highway 4 Phase 2. A, temporary easement for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 16, Township 12 North, T12N, Range 5, R5W, of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma parcel number 14.1. B, warranty deed for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 16, Township 12, Range 5 West, of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma parcel number 14. C, warranty deed for a strip, piece, or parcel of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 16, Township 12 North, Range 5 West, of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma parcel number 15. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item number 11. Consider approving a final plan for Spanish Cove Phase 2, 50 East Bandament, being a part of the northwest quarter of Section 28, Township 12 North, Range 5 West, of the Indian Meridian in Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Wright, you want to tell us on this?
We approve.
Okay.
Good thing. Okay, let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Okay, is there any new business?
No new business tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, seeing no new business, let's do council discussion. We'll start with Councilwoman Gilliland to begin with.
Thank you. Thank you to Parks and Recreation and City Management. That also brought in a lot of help from other departments to make the July third and fourth events quite successful. My family enjoyed the events, and we had a good evening. Let me, let me just leave you with a thought that I've had this week. I would encourage people to think about how complicated human beings can be. That includes our history, that includes our interactions with one another. One of my favorite people in history, American history, is Henry Ford. If you look into his personal life, maybe not the, the most perfect person, but he changed the world, and that's a complicated thing to look at and to deal with. But he said something that I'd love to share with, in particular, my students or athletes. And I'll share it with you tonight. Every man, let me say, let me say actually a direct quote. There isn't a man living who cannot do more than he thinks he can.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kachini?
Well, I'd like to follow up on the third and fourth of July, it was a very good event, safe event thanks to our police and fire. And I want to thank the City Manager for doing an outstanding job this step as well. My second thing, I'd like to recommend a recognition to the City Mayor here. It seems that when we come out here, there are certain things about the issues, the actions that we're going to take that we don't really understand. And I think we ought to have like fifteen or twenty minutes prior to the meeting, the seven o'clock meeting. We used to do this before, and this is the first time. I say my first time in the two years I've been at the City Councilman, that we come to these meetings at seven o'clock, and we've got all kinds of questions, it's like we don't understand what's being put in front of us. And I'm not saying anything bad about anybody, but if we all have questions and we can resolve them ahead of time, then we wouldn't take up so much time with the city and its people.
Thank you. Thank you, we do get a packet ahead of time for us to look at. I don't make the study sessions, I was told we would not have a study session for tonight. I'm not in charge of that. Okay, Councilwoman, uh, men, sorry, Wooten?
Parks and Rec, amazing. His citizens say that this was the best show they've seen in twenty years. It was, it was fun. I believe the best part was seeing our police department getting the chance to dunk the mayor. That was.
They are very good aims. Very.
Well worth the donation.
Well worth it, it went for a good cause.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I've had a lot of compliments on the fourth. I, I unfortunately wasn't able to be here, I got to spend time with my own family and so forth, but thanks to the city for all the hard work and dedication that you put forth for our earth, for the July.
Thank you, and in closing, I would just like to say the same thing. The fourth of July and the third, all of our city employees that were out there had a smile on their face. They were eager to help, they couldn't wait to help individuals. So again, I applaud them. If you haven't been out to Highway Four lately, please make your way out there. It is coming along, and I'm very, very excited about that. Also, let's not forget our concerts in the Park Series. Thursday this week on July ninth, the band is Big Train and the Locomotives. If you haven't been out there, they have wonderful food trucks, a great time. And then also on Friday, June tenth, we'll have Junior Boot Camp. The Yukon Veterans Museum volunteers will create a fun morning for kids to get to be Army recruits. You didn't tell us about that, Rick. And then we'll go back and have the regular, back to the regular concerts. I want to thank you for coming tonight. Remember that each one of us, you have our email, you have our telephone numbers. Please contact us if you have any questions. And this is an amazing city with amazing people that are in it. This meeting is adjourned.